And ask everyone to stand and ask the town fan to lead us in the pledge, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the good will with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First order of business will be approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda and add the maintenance issue at Ededale as amended.
Do we have a second on amending the agenda? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, six of five stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, six of five stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is recognition.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first thing we want to recognize are students who have been participating in the Kingsport Times News Write On contest. These are students at Ededale Elementary. Kylie LaFeveres, Kylie Long, Chloe Milligan, and Isabel Rodriguez. At Pennington Middle, Tyson Bailey, Harmony Brown, Alexia Libisi, Sarah Neoms, Xavier Reagan, Elizabeth Sanders. Again, we appreciate the participation of these students in this program, but specifically the efforts of the teachers to have our students recognized for their creative abilities.
Next is recognition of Beth Schell as Region Seven Teacher of the Year.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you're aware, Beth Schell, who currently teaches for us at the Lee Career Technical Center and also at Jonesville Middle, was recently recognized as being the Region Seven Teacher of the Year. We recognized her back in May as the Division Teacher of the Year and with competition between she and 19 other teachers in the region, she has been selected to represent the region, which runs all the way to Kielanski, in that general area, to represent us and the region at the state level, which will be held on Monday, October 17th, is coming Monday. They will be interviewing the eight regional representatives to determine the state teacher of the year. So, we're excited that Miss Schell is doing this, and we have a plaque and a certificate for her. So, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Next, we have public comment. Anyone want to comment? Remember, there's a time limit, and ask that you address the subject and not individuals. If there's no comment, we'll move on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda consisting of the approval of amendments from the September 8th, 2016 Record Meeting, the physical year 17 financial statement, Lee County Head Start accounts payable, and approval of VACOR's Workers Compensation Panel of Physicians.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, six of five stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the reports of the board. Does anybody have any reports?
Oh, I've got a couple.
Okay.
Of course, first, I'd like to congratulate and wish Beth Schell luck this coming Monday. I know you'll represent us well. One of our former students, Mike Cuse, excuse me, was inducted into the Emory and Henry Hall of Fame this past weekend. Also, the students who did the write-on recognition, I congratulate them. It's always interesting to read the comments that they've made. And I was at a meeting yesterday, the triad meeting, and the speaker at the occasion made the comment that she felt like the teachers of Lee County are terrific. Of course, I knew that, but it's always good to hear somebody else affirm it also. She said she goes into other school systems and everything, but she thinks the Lee County teachers are just terrific.
Agreed.
And I agree.
Are you going to mention Mike, the golfer at Thomas Walker?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Taylor Williams and Coach Nathan Coke for, he finished third in the state of the Single-A Golf Tournament this year. From Thomas Walker, Taylor Williams. And congratulate Miss Schell.
I was also going to congratulate Miss Schell and also Mikey Hughes. Mikey played football as a standout at Lehigh and then also a standout at Emory, so it's a pretty big deal. He helped the team, the Lehigh team, a couple of weeks ago, coin toss the fourth game, so I want to congratulate him. Also, just wanted to mention that the Lehigh football team's off to a good start. They had a rough time last Friday, but they played a really good team, and we have a big game coming up tomorrow night against Gate City, so everybody needs to come out and support them. It's a big game for us. Also, I wanted to mention that our volleyball team is doing great. I think they've lost one match, and Alexis Carson's the new coach, and she's doing a really excellent job. And in that regard, although not affiliated with the school system, I did find out that Alexis's mom Jill was appointed to the Virginia Municipal League Board of Directors this week, so she's one of the 10 board directors for the whole state. I think that's a good accomplishment.
And just a little add to what we're talking about with our Lehigh volleyball team, they beat Gate City, from what I understand, the first time that Lehigh had beat Gate City in the history of Lehigh in volleyball. And that's something to say, because Gate City has a very strong volleyball team. And Beth Schell, congratulations to you. Not only are you in the eyes of the award that you received, but your students. I've had many, many students just tell me what a wonderful individual that you are. And thank you for the service that you do to Lee County Schools. We're blessed to have you.
Thank you. Next is reports of division superintendent.
The first item is the schools with the highest percentage of attendance for the month of September. Want to recognize in second place Flatwoods with a 95.02% attendance rate, and the school with the highest percentage of attendance that will be receiving the trophy is Elk Knob with 96.4%. So, appreciate the efforts of the students, teachers, and especially the parents in ensuring that students get to school. Next thing that I have is an enrollment update, as you can see, and you'll see up on the screen, available online are the same documents that are available to school board members as you scroll down the agenda. Enrollment update, you can see there's an attachment. I'll just demonstrate quickly, but there's an attachment. If you click on that, you can see our enrollment numbers by school. This also details not only the headcounts, the students in the buildings, but also our average daily membership. You'll notice down here, I can't really see where the mouse is on that screen over there, but three-quarters of the way across the page, you'll see our enrollment was 3,053 at the end of September, which was down eight students from the end of August, and that's also down 32 students from this time last year. The good news on that is if you look just to the right of those numbers, our average daily membership was 3,055.8. So, that means that we had more students than 3,053 for a significant period of time in September. So, we have some very varying fluctuations in enrollment during September. We're hoping that stabilizes, but as is, enrollment's holding for the budget side of things, that we're going to be able to maintain our spending plan as presented. Any questions? Next thing that I have is just providing an administrative update regarding fundraisers and field trips. We, at the division level, are scrutinizing fundraisers and field trips much more than probably has been done in the past. And the reason that we're doing that is, from a fundraiser standpoint, it's come to our attention that a lot of fundraisers over the years were done for things to purchase air conditioners or things that, in our opinion, are more the responsibility of school board, I want to say central office, from a facility standpoint than to be out asking taxpayers to pay for things that are part of the facility. So, we're scrutinizing those to a much higher degree than we have in the past, and have actually denied some because of the reasons that have been stated. If a group of students do a fundraiser, this is per school board policy, is intended to go to the benefit of those students for a reason that's not something that we have budgeted from a taxpayer standpoint. Field trips, much the same. We're looking at the instructional value of field trips much more than we probably have in the past, so just wanted to make the board aware of that. Item D, last month, we awarded a contract to Evergreen Solutions to conduct a salary study. We are in the process of collecting data for that. As part of that data collection, they have requested doing a public input meeting. We will have that scheduled for Tuesday, October 25th, here at the school board office. Now, that is not a school board meeting. School board members may be in attendance, but that is a public input meeting where we administration will kick off the meeting and then hand it over to Evergreen Solutions to get feedback from the community.
At what time?
Six o'clock.
What was the date?
The 25th at six o'clock. This is also, if you look on board docs, we've got a salary study, and you can see the date and time there. And also, down at the bottom, it's under the key dates, upcoming dates, so we try to make sure that we're advertising that not only to the public, and appreciate Ms. Carver's support in getting that message out, but we'll also be providing some more information through our website, so. Next thing is State Security Equipment Grant. We were awarded some funds, almost $58,000, to update our security systems here in the division. One of the items that we have up for board consideration is a RFP to try to streamline our security systems. Currently, we have three different vendors that work in our schools to varying degrees, and I will say with varying degrees of success, but we're going to find one vendor that can service all of those and give us a much better product and provide a better level of security and communication within our schools. Next thing, insurance consultant services. Mark III is in the process of sending out information to all of our employees. We will be running a flexible spending plan from January through June this year. That's a half of a tax year, and we're going to be working through the details of that, so you'll see information coming out through email and also on our website about different plans that they're making, but flexible spending will be something that we will be making available in January. Any questions?
The security grant, would it possibly include metal detectors on the high schools?
No, sir, not at this point. At this point, we look, and those tend to be cost prohibitive, and, you know, we are blessed that we haven't had that issue.
Right.
But, you know, that could be something down the road, but initial things are getting the doors secured, getting a buzz-in system, trying to get more integrated with our camera system so that that way we have a better coverage on a variety of things. Any other questions? Access control is a big thing on this portion of it. School calendar development, the next thing that we will be working on administratively through the communication committees, we are going to be meeting with the superintendent teacher committee, but then also starting the support staff committee this month. We're going to be talking about the calendar for next year. I know that seems early in the process, but it's time to start looking at that from a developmental process. We will be providing you information, bringing our first draft to you in January for approval in February. That way, we're communicating with our families and our community well in advance of the start of the school year. Snow routes, have met with the towns and also have scheduled meetings with the Virginia Department of Transportation so that we can take a look at, can they help us if we were to go to a snow route plan? If we were a closed school and have isolated snow in the county, that we wouldn't have to close the whole division, as long as we could provide transportation to most of our students, we may operate on snow routes. Again, this is just in the discussion phase. We'll be bringing a proposal to you next month for your consideration for approval in December. That will clearly define the routes that we would run, making sure that we provide safe turnaround spots for our buses and the students that we would have on those buses. So, that plan will be coming to you next month. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. First motion is a motion to file, well, it's final review for approval of school board policy, GCBD-BR2 leaf sharing program, which was tabled for the September 8th, 2016 Record Meeting. Do we have a motion for approval of that policy?
I make a motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions. One is, and it was my motion to table it till this month anyway, due to the provision that a person accepting the leaf share would not be allowed to have VRS credit. Is there a possibility that on the application form, that a statement could be made that by accepting this to make sure that people are aware that they are not going to receive?
Ms. Jesse, that would be easily added to. We're going to have a form that clearly delineates that you're requesting, and then also if you want to receive from, if you want to donate to a particular college, you may designate that. The VRS issue, as presented, the school board would continue to pay health insurance benefits for up to one year while the employee is on unpaid leave, but accepting days from other individuals so that they still maintain a paycheck. But as presented, we would not be paying the VRS portion of the employee's salary at that point.
And second question then, just as FMLA, then this could be used incrementally, correct?
Yes, ma'am. If an employee came back from a leave, these are not required to be consecutive days. If they were out two days this week, three days next week, whatever fits with the need that they have, then yes, ma'am, this could be accommodated.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, six of five stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is final review for approval to change high school schedules to a four-by-four block schedule format for the 2017-2018 school year. Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion?
We got discussion.
We had a lot of discussion.
Been at Thomas Walker all day, talking to teachers, and obviously, they've all got questions, and it's a scary thing for everybody, no doubt, but math teachers is a little worried. Are we going to line up like Wise County offered Part One, Part A and B Algebra to all students at Thomas Walker?
Yes, sir. We would work on making sure that we provide the best opportunities that we could for students. This would be a, maybe not a titled Part One, Part Two. We would make sure that students who were aligned to take the Algebra I SOL test had ample opportunity and learning opportunities to be able to be successful in that endeavor, but also in the learning that goes into that. But yes.
Another issue with Thomas Walker being different than pretty much any other high school in the state, I know of having eighth grade held in it. What do we do with eighth grade?
Well, first of all, I want to say that Thomas Walker's not the only high school in the Commonwealth that has eighth grade.
It feels that way.
The only one in Lee County. But, no, there's a lot of other schools that have that format, and yes, we could accommodate a seventh-period, eighth-grade schedule within that with the ninth grade being a block schedule. We don't want to offer eighth graders at Thomas Walker dramatically different opportunities than are being offered at Jonesville or Pennington. To that point, if a student at Thomas Walker were to take an Algebra I course and the enrollment allowed for it, then yes, they may take an Algebra I course on a block schedule, but still take their other classes on a seven-period day. So, we would have to work through that, but that's something that can be done.
Do we have adequate time to implement this next school year? Do we have to change our whole scheduling?
Yes, sir. The reason that we set it up this way, we did public hearings in August, first review in September, for consideration tonight, with the intent of being able to look at, first of all, we would, you know, pending board approval, we would have panel discussions where we bring in teachers and administrators from other school divisions to talk to our teachers and our administrative staff. We would end up at some point sending teachers to other school divisions to see how that teaching is done, how it impacts instruction. Then we would look at the schedule, you know, what kind of schedule would we run to accommodate AP, automatic accounts payable, advanced placement courses, so that way we're providing the best opportunities we can for our students. We'll have to look at a registration guide, our program of studies, our course offerings to make sure that we've got those ready and available for registration in January, February. We would train guidance and administration staffs, because guidance becomes a key factor in this, to make sure that from a pacing and I want to say continuity standpoint from math, language arts, anything like that with a foreign language, where if you take something in your freshman year, but you don't take another course until your junior year, you can have a huge disconnect. So, we want to make sure that we train our guidance counselors on how to make sure students are provided the best opportunities, and then, of course, curriculum, instruction, and pacing would be our next thing we would look at.
So, there's going to be adequate time and adequate training, professional development for our teachers to change over from teaching the seven-period schedule to the block schedule?
Yes, sir. In my opinion, we'll work through March, April, and if things are not going well, then we may come back to you and say, okay, instead of it being a 16, 17 start, a 17, 18 start, we may request that it be an 18, 19. We're not going to rush into this at the expense of our students.
If this passes, you're getting started on this tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
How does this affect, say, your sophomores? How would they transition into this from straight seven? How would that work?
As we've mentioned at public hearings, what we would end up doing is petitioning the State Board of Education to raise our graduation requirements. Other school divisions have done this, and what we would do is we would phase that in, so that this year's juniors probably would still operate under the same graduation requirements, and then sophomores would have more graduation requirements because there would be additional courses made available.
Would send anybody back?
No, ma'am.
Okay, what about, like, with your dual credit classes? Would that help or lessen?
Going back to the first class that would be fully implemented on the four-by-four graduation requirement would be current eighth graders. So, would it impact dual enrollment? I think it would have a positive impact on dual enrollment because community college courses are offered on a semester, as would the four-by-four. So, our curriculum and our pacing and everything would be almost at a community college level, and I think with the continuity of instruction, that a 90-minute period over 90 days, you could have the same quality of instruction, if not better, than with 180 days, 50 minutes.
Could maybe more?
Possibly. And again, that gets...
But it would not take away?
In my opinion, no, ma'am, and what has been shown in data, but that comes down to, again, training our guidance counselors, making sure we put students in the appropriate courses with prerequisites, as well as training our teachers on how to make sure that they fully utilize a 90-minute block.
So, every absence is now magnified under a block schedule, right?
Yes, sir.
So, are we going to have a program in place to, I don't know, kind of have an early detection system of students that are in danger of, you know, having real problems because of absenteeism? What are we going to address that from?
We address that with a position, actually, dropout prevention and individual who's addressing truancy early on and is doing a good job of communicating that with principals. Dropout prevention, truancy is being communicated better, in my opinion, than it has in years. So, we're on top of that with the intent of helping our students, and then this will just be an additional benefit.
Other questions?
Back to the eighth grade thing at Thomas Walker, and we've got teachers teaching eighth grade, you know, English, two or three periods, and then going on to the 11th grade. How's that going to work with block if eighth grade's not on a block schedule?
I imagine that it will impact planning, because we'll have to look at planning time, and I want to say how that works, but it's feasible.
How would this, okay, you've got eighth grade, we have Algebra I at our eighth grade level, and say a child takes that at the middle school on a straight schedule, and then another child doesn't take it till they get to Lee High on a block schedule. Would that do anything?
We're going to have to make sure our curriculum's aligned, but in theory, 180 days of 50 minutes, you're going to cover the same content that you do in a 90-minute block.
Well, we have to put a little bit into middle school, do you think? Do a little bit of a block there to be able to balance that since you have Algebra I in your middle school?
Down the road, yes, ma'am, but I don't think that that would be something that we would try to put in place in 17, 18.
But it would be okay?
Yes, ma'am.
With it not being in place?
With our leadership coming out of our instructional department, yes, ma'am, I think between that and the leadership of our principals, we will be in good shape to be ready for students in August. And again, if we get into the spring and things are not coming together, we're having concerns, then we may push it out to 18, 19, come back with an administrative recommendation of changing the date.
That was a month later.
Okay.
Yes.
That's good, okay.
I mean, we're not going to, phrase I use sometimes, square peg, round hole, we're not going to force this through. We want to make sure that we've provided the best opportunities for our teachers so that our students are ready.
That sounds good. Very, very helpful.
How will this not be detrimental to band and other extracurricular activities?
Extracurricular activities, if you're talking about sports, I don't think that's going to impact at all.
They can't be banned.
If you're talking FFA, other events like that, I think it depends on how you teach. Band, what I have seen that works, and this is where we will talk to other school divisions to ensure that we find the one that fits best for us, but typically, what would happen is you may have a marching band in the fall, and then you may have a jazz band in the spring, and you may have some students that sign up for one that don't sign up for the other. Somebody maybe doesn't want to commit the time to marching band, but they may want to play in jazz, and that works if it's set up correctly. And again, a good working relationship between a band director and a guidance counselor and a principal can make that work and be successful for our students.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor of approval to change high school schedules to a four-by-four block schedule format for the 2017-2018 school year, six of five stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm standing.
Motion carries. 311. Next, for action discussion items, action if any to award a contract for RFP number 16-1003, Division Wide Facility Master Plan. Anybody have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Do you want to discuss?
Discuss that.
Mr. Chairman, we, per the last school board meeting, had permission to put out a request for proposals, received two responses back, and interviewed both companies. Through that interview process, the panel went through an hour-long interview with each one of the presenters and is recommending an award of contract to a company called MGT of America, who specializes in these type of facility studies, and I think that what the quality of the product and evaluation that they'll bring to the table will dramatically impact what we do in the future with our facilities, as well as help guide our budget discussions in the next coming months. Administration recommends approval.
Okay. Do you want to have a motion?
I make a motion that we award the contract to MGT America.
Second. Any discussion? Did you two meet with this company?
Yes.
Yes.
Who else was involved?
Me, Mr. Early, Mr. Hobbs, and Ms. Lambert.
Okay. That was consensus of the group, I take it?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second? Do you second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion besides what we already talked about? All in favor, six of five stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm standing.
Motion carries. Action if any to issue a request for proposals for a security equipment.
As mentioned earlier, we are requesting permission to issue a request for proposals so that we can find a company that will help us use our existing systems better and also be able to provide us one platform to invest in in the future. So, as presented, administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we award the contract to MGT America.
Second. Any discussion? Did you two meet with this company?
Yes.
Yes.
Who else was involved?
Me, Mr. Early, Mr. Hobbs, and Ms. Lambert.
Okay. That was consensus of the group, I take it?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second? Do you second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion besides what we already talked about? All in favor, six of five stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action if any to issue a request for proposals for a security equipment.
As mentioned earlier, we are requesting permission to issue a request for proposals so that we can find a company that will help us use our existing systems better and also be able to provide us one platform to invest in in the future. So, as presented, administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
All right. Do we have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, six of five stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointment of a school board member to serve on superintendent's support staff communication committee. Do you want to address that just briefly?
As we have been doing in the past, we have a superintendent-teacher communication committee that provides a lot of good feedback to administration. Can give you several examples, but it just provides an excellent opportunity for me to communicate with teachers directly, and it's lots of good conversations. Similarly, we proposed in May creating a support staff communication committee so that they can come in and have similar conversations, so that it's not just teachers that we're talking about, bus drivers, custodians, clerical staff, any support staff position, and we've asked principals to send nominations, and we've got a committee formed. We'll be having our first meeting in a couple of weeks. We want to make sure that we're communicating things that come from board meetings as well as budget items over the next couple of months, so we're requesting that a member of the school board be appointed to this committee.
I make a motion to appoint Debbie Jesse as a school board member to serve on the superintendent's support staff communication committee. superintendent support staff communication committee. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We amended the agenda at the first, so I guess the next thing to do is we're going to add the Elydale maintenance issue.
Just the basketball, Elydale's been kind of left out over the years. Pennington and John will both have middle school teams. We don't, the only thing I'm asking is for the board to help with the floor. It's super, super slick. Kids have been hurt last year playing on it. And I don't know what to do for it. As Booster's president, parents, people strive to mop, buff, I mean, just do everything. So just help with some professional help to get it where it's playable and nobody gets hurt more than anything.
Mr. Kidwell, you're asking to create a team at Elydale six, seven-
Right, right.
That would be supported in a manner similar to what we do at Jonesville Middle, Pennington Middle with travel, uniforms, that type of stuff from school board?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not-
No, I think, I'm wrong. What you're wanting now is us to give approval for them to have someone check out the gym floor.
The floor, so they can have a say.
The schools get their own uniforms. We, the uniform part, we probably got covered through Boosters, but the bus ride, we don't.
I was going to say the bus ride would require board approval.
Right.
The floor is something that we can handle administratively. I mean, the creation of a team that we put on a bus, that's what requires, because it can't be a booster club traveling.
Right, you can't do-
Booster clubs can't travel on school buses.
Right.
Right.
So you don't need to make the booster bar?
Yes.
That's what we're trying to do is get it to where it's just like John won't be.
Okay.
But with help with the floor now, we might have to bid some professional help to fix it because it's been attempted several times.
We can do, we can do an IFB, that's something administratively, invitation for bids.
Right.
Now, to do an RFP, we have to have your permission, but an IFB is what I would recommend. We can handle that administratively. But to put students on buses, we would need board permission to create a, man, this is just my thinking, grade six, seven, whatever you're proposing, so that way we can create a team.
Possibly some eighth grade from Thomas Walker, maybe that don't make the JV teams. Like I said, the bus ride, pretty sure everybody has to do a physical and everything. But I'm asking to be in line with the rest of the county for Elydale, just like John won't be.
They would have to do a physical, but they wouldn't be covered under VHSL catastrophic insurance. They'd be covered under A-CORPS. So, yes, in a similar manner to Johnson County.
However, we need to worry that I'm, I'm ready.
Okay.
That's what, six, seventh, and eighth?
Yes.
What sports?
It's basketball, well, basketball.
Boys, girls?
And the reason why I'm doing this, Elydale has no sports. We have no sports school prior. We have Fall Festival, and that's about the end of our little Elydale school. We want to be noted, just like the rest of the county in the sports. I don't think we can be.
Is Elydale six, seven?
Elydale is fifth, sixth, seventh. The fifth grade plays Booster Ball at Rose Hill.
Okay.
It's sixth, seventh, and some eighth graders that don't play JV, twenty to eighty. Not asking for much, just a bus ride, permission to do so. Help with the floor.
I'll make that a motion.
Yeah.
So basketball, boys and girls? Any spring sports?
We can address that. Yeah, not at the moment, no. We'd have to.
Okay, so creation of a sports program to be supported by school board funds for boys and girls basketball.
Correct.
Sixth, seventh, and some eighth grader.
Well, would that have to go into effect?
When you want to start, Mike. As soon as possible. Basketball around the corner. Mr. Gray says he will handle all the scheduling, getting the bus in there. He'll act as the athletic director for the school. He's excited about it. All the parents is excited about it, and I think it will be a good thing for our community.
I hate to pull elementary procedure or anything, Mike, but the agenda was amended for maintenance.
Right.
Unless we want to try to re-amend the agenda and add-
It was everything clumped into one, but yes, the maintenance issue is the floor. And if we need to vote on it, we can.
We need to do it today.
Yeah, let's get this done.
Tell them next week. That's all I'm asking.
What are you saying, Will?
Hey, we need to do it.
We can either have a motion to re-amend the agenda or, you said something that you could just do it administratively as far as-
We can handle the maintenance issue.
The maintenance issue. And so I think that would help get you in line for, because that's the main holdup.
Yeah, you've got to get that done.
Right. And so then, once that's explored, I think.
Still need to form a team, I mean, now.
Right.
Well, don't we need the board's approval to create a team six, seven, eight, so that way we can put them on buses?
You for sure would.
Okay.
But I also think you make a floor first.
I agree.
Well, can we re-amend the agenda? We've done it for the floor.
We can do it both.
You can. Okay. Does anybody want to make the motion to re-amend the agenda?
I'll still move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify stating aye?
Wait a minute, what are we amending the agenda to?
You're re-amending the agenda and then you add the aye?
Yeah.
Correct. Right?
All right. I think we, is there any discussion?
I made a motion.
Okay. You second it?
I second, yes.
Any discussion?
If it's called school bar. Is that how it's stated? It's not called Booster Bar. We need to make sure-
It's six, seventh, and eighth grade.
Basketball.
Basketball?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, signify stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, do we have a motion to add that particular item?
I make the motion.
State the specificity, please, so we don't have you confused.
To do away with Booster Bar and make it, is it called school bar? Do you know what it's-
Let me, let me make the motion.
Go ahead.
I make the motion that we take the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students from Elydale and Thomas Walker and allow them to form a middle school basketball team.
At Elydale?
At Elydale. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next thing on the agenda is closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss personnel, code of Virginia, two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-a-one, and also to discuss pending and threatened litigation. And that code is two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-a-seven.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed?